Good evening. This meeting of October 28th, 2019 of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call please.
Mr. Barton?
Here.
Ms. Bradley?
Here.
Mr. Donahue? Mr. Prohaska?
Here.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Sancy?
Here.
Ms. Whitman?
Here.
Thank you.
I'll take a moment. I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second. It is moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That takes us to our strategic plan review. Mr. Rengan?
All right. So, and is this microphone, I'm not used to using one of these. Is this sensitive enough? I can just talk normal? Okay. So, as you all know, six or seven years ago, we changed our process around the strategic plans so that we produce yearly priority initiatives, which are sort of a subset of our five-year goal. We report out to the board and by doing so, report out to the community three times a year. We do one in November, we do one in February, and we do one in April. The April one does sort of double duty. We report out on the initiatives for the year and we set, or at least set draft priorities for the following year. And so tonight is the first of those meetings and so it's really sort of our first go-through of those priority initiatives. In other words, what have we been able to accomplish or where are we at on that path towards accomplishing those priority initiatives during this school year. So, as we start, you'll notice the updates and if anybody in the, would like a copy, we've got extra copies here. We can get you copies of the initiatives. It's gonna be kind of small on the screen. So, operational means that not only is it accomplished, but it has been systematized so that it just will reoccur on a yearly or biannually basis, whatever that would be appropriate for that initiative. Completed means it is done. Orange is significant progress. Purple is steady progress. The blue is some progress and the gray is canceled. So, a couple of things, the first meeting of the year, again, we would expect that the majority of our initiatives would be somewhere in progress. A few might be checkmarks, but certainly not the vast majority of them. The first year we did this, we had a lot of checkmarks at our first meeting and I think the board kind of said, "Well, if they're all checkmarks by October," you know, how big of a goal or how much of a stretch was that for the district? So, we've tried to create, you know, things that are attainable within a 12-month period. And then the canceled, I think the board also kind of called that out saying, "Well, if you achieve everything you ever set your sights on or you're setting your sights high enough." So, there are some things that we start and quite honestly, they don't fit or they don't work out the way we thought they were gonna work out, so they end up being canceled. So, those, just an update on our key indicators. I will go through each of the 20 or so priority initiatives, give you a couple of talking points and see if there are any questions in regards to that. We do have a lot of the folks in the room who are responsible for specific priority initiatives, so if you have some questions, we'll ask those folks to step up to the microphone. We don't have quite as much room as we do in our normal boardroom. Hopefully, very soon to be back in there. So, student achievement and development. So, our first priority initiative is to create an array of coursework pathways that facilitate development of a student's interest-based academic plan. Think of a college major, if you will, not quite that intense, but it says, you know, if you're interested in pursuing a future in these variety of different areas, what are the courses you might want to think about taking as a freshman, a sophomore, junior, or senior? And we haven't been very specific about that in the past in our course catalog and so our, we have a committee working pretty hard on that. So, the educational support team, which are our curriculum specialists, second floor of the forum, currently working to develop those pathways and their content cluster areas to help students align course selection with career goals. So, the intent would be to have those available in our course catalog in December or January. So, you'll see that it is significant progress, but it has to be significant progress if it's gonna make it in the course catalog in January or February. And then when completed, these pathways will be available as individual documents will include in the high school course guide. So, again, if I'm a student, if I'm a parent, if I'm an interested adult, you know, mentoring a student, I can look at, you know, something somebody's interested in, what courses should I be helping them, advise them to take as a freshman, sophomore, junior, or senior? Again, it's not, it's not, I don't want it to be viewed as, once you start on that pathway, there's not a flexibility because a lot of those are just some recommendations and we certainly understand that a 14-year-old high school freshman and an 18-year-old high school senior might have very different ideas about what their future is. So, it has to be some flexibility and they're building it back and forth. Okay? Number two, implement the new Bridges math curriculum in grades K-5 and the new preschool plan to enhance instructions for the district's earliest learners. As you know, whenever we have a curriculum adoption, that's always an interesting endeavor because our staff, and we do that every 10 years or so, our staff pretty invested in the current curriculum. So, our team's been working very hard. Bridges has been launched in elementary schools. Implementation is currently on track with the established timeframe. Bridges staff development was held before school in August and recently on October 4th, the new program, interventions with students and assessments. So, again, helping our staff become comfortable, if you will, with the new curriculum and then how that can be best implemented with our students. And then district-based and community partner preschools continue to be involved in implementing the preschool plan. So, you've seen our preschool plan. I should, I guess, mention to the folks who might be watching this, a lot of these get fleshed out in our subcommittee meetings. We have two subcommittee meetings every month, Support Services and then Educational Programs. Those are also public meetings, so you're certainly invited to attend those. And we go into much greater detail. We'll spend, you know, a meeting on one of these particular initiatives and not all 20 at the same time. So, we didn't want the community to think that maybe this is the only time the board gets an update, but we have a lot of opportunities to do that in our subcommittees.
With those two being combined?
Yeah.
And the, both of, are they both implemented to the same extent?
So, in this case, they are. So, one of the things that we struggle with slightly is we try to keep our initiatives to 20. And so, when we're developing the priority initiatives, a lot of times we'll end up at 22 or 23 and we start putting things together so that we meet our own goal of 20 or fewer and really, and so Nancy's question is, since those are somewhat different goals, are you at the same place? And we would say yes, that we are and again, we can talk about that at subcommittee or I can certainly ask Cindy, you should maybe come up and talk about the preschool one. That's where we get caught into our own self-imposed, well, we shouldn't have more than X number as we start to combine a few things.
Got it. I remember when the preschool plan had come to the ed programs committee. So, I would be interested if we could have, it's a vigorous plan, to say the least, and I know there are 20 substantial activities there for the year, so.
We'll put that on one of our coming ed program subcommittee. I don't know that it will be next month, but in maybe January, December, January.
Good, thank you.
So, let me make another, if Joni's not here, she would be the one that reminds me. So, Mike's gonna do the best he can. Number three, study at-risk factors and develop programming for students in grades 7 through 10. So, a little background, many years ago, 10, 12 years ago or more, we used to have an alternative high school that served grades 9 through 12. We moved away from that to an alternative program that largely serves students in grades 11 and 12. Because there's kind of that, if you build it, they'll come kind of a thing and we felt, do we have too many students in that alternative program, some of which should be in our traditional high schools? So, now we're looking at the 7, 10 grade span to say, okay, what additional supports do we need for our at-risk students in the middle school and in the early years of high school? Because we don't want them to have to fail to get into a program in which they can be successful. We want to figure out what's, how do we meet them? And so, that's been something that our principals and folks have been pretty hard at work with. So, the actual talking points, Committee of District Administrators, Secondary Principals, Assistant Principals, Instructional Coaches met to study these factors, has been established and has held its initial meetings. It's only had, it's only had one meeting to date with four additional meetings scheduled for November and December. So, again, one you'll see significant change with, so it's on some progress right now. It's kind of a timing thing. By the time we report out the next time, there'll have been five meetings and I think there'll be a solid plan as to how do we move forward with those programs for the students in that age range who need those programmings. And the committee began by reviewing current program and data related to at-risk programming, as you might expect. So, what's the current data telling us? How are our students doing? And again, we don't want our students to, we wanna be there to catch them as they're needed and not let them, you know, suffer too much of a failure before all of a sudden we step in with some of those interventions for our at-risk students. All right, questions? Enhance gifted and talented programming utilizing recommendations from the gifted and talented program study. So, last year, the board challenged us to see, and we spent a lot of time talking about our students who have needs for support from an at-risk standpoint, but we also have students who have need for support from a talented and gifted standpoint. Again, we want all of our students to maximize their educational opportunities while they're in the district. So, what are we doing to support those students who need advanced opportunities to sort of maximize that potential? So, our talking points at the elementary level, Gifted and Talented Study Committee developed recommendations for the program enhancements. So, we'll be beginning to talk about those at our ed programs until we are at the significant progress point. Work is currently focused on creating action plans based on the recommendations of the committee while also identifying populations underrepresented in the gifted and talented programming. So, the, you know, gifted and talented has many different facets. It can be math and science, it can be the arts, it can be leadership, there are many, many ways to be gifted and talented. And we want to make sure that all of our students have opportunities to show us that there are areas of gifted and talented so we can support, again, their higher achievement and those, you know, again maximizing their opportunities. At the secondary level, current work is focused on exploring the potential and capacity for high school teachers to offer college-level courses in the core areas. So, we have staff members who, through the concurrent enrollment process with the community college, could offer coursework in our buildings. And we do do some of that, but we don't do as much as some other districts do. So, that students who wanted that college experience while a high school student could do, they could do a PSEO, post-secondary enrollment option, which means they go to Lawrence Clark, UD, and Maes on campus and take a class. That can be tricky for some kids because they have to give up two classes to take the one because of the way the schedule works and for transportation. Another way is concurrent enrollment and so can we teach with the right, you know, you've got a qualified teacher, the syllabus is approved by NICC, there's some collaboration about what the outcomes would be, and then allowing students to gain college credit while a high school student. That kind of enhances or works with our AP courses and so students can have both of those opportunities. We want our kids, our young people, to feel success in those areas so that they are maybe more voted, motivated to follow that pathway. And I think it's worth us, something that we'll talk about later, a study around AP. We're talking a lot about getting more kids into AP. Personal experience has been that fewer colleges are accepting AP credits coming in or if they do, they take them as electives. And so, are we, do we have the right mix between the AP and the PSEO and the concurrent enrollment so students can, you know, have those opportunities in high school? But AP has been an interesting conversation with us. We're trying to encourage more and more students to take AP. At the same time, we do feel, and I certainly found out as a parent, that a lot of those AP classes just don't count, if they do count, they count as elective credits that you don't really need anyway and you know, you're taking the.
Yeah, but the AP classes really prepare students for college.
Absolutely.
I mean, big difference than.
So, dual purposes, yeah. So, are they preparing kids for the college level? You know, in a perfect world, kids would take a variety of both.
Yep.
So, Stan, the, this is a gifted and talented program study, right? K through 12?
Yes. The third bullet doesn't fit as smartly in the gifted and talented. It's more of a all-students though. We do, at our high school level, our gifted and talented program really does revolve around AP historically and so we're trying to figure out are there other components of that as well.
So, that's in the mix of the study?
Yes.
This is not the, the single result of the secondary study?
No.
Okay.
No, it's just one of the things that we're looking at. And quite honestly, other schools have moved ahead of us in that area in some places. There are students who, through their community college, graduate high school with a significant number of community college credits, which they are, depending upon the articulation agreement, most likely if they stay at the Regents or even most of the privates in Iowa, most of those classes move over in a way that the AP hasn't. So, we're just trying to make sure we're giving our students the.
It's not the same rigor as.
Well, it all depends.
It does, on the, I've just seen.
Yeah. It all, I mean, it all depends and I think the motivation is to not offer a softer pathway to make sure that the rigor is there, to make sure that the composition class that they take would prepare them in the same way that it would be as AP or quite honestly, as a freshman in a college setting. So, that's certainly our goal because we want our kids to be successful when they go to the next level.
I just don't want to lose focus. I mean, having lots of opportunities is the goal, I would say.
Absolutely. Wide variety of opportunities. Yep.
Do all of our buildings have gifted and talented instructors?
They do. Yep, they all have gifted and talented. Now, some of those positions are shared, based on the size of the school.
And as we're looking to increase or get more kids involved, would that mean more of the buildings would have to have full-time or it still would work?
It could. Yeah, it certainly could.
There still should be some qualifications, right?
Absolutely.
Back in the day at Wash, Dorothy Gibbs would stick to her guns on, I think it was 93rd percentile to be into the honors program or the tag program or whatever it was. Yeah, I don't know that I feel quite that same way about a hard and fast number being a qualifier or not a qualifier, but there still will be standards for that. I think my concern is that, and I think you're addressing it, is that we have to have some time spent strategically as a school board, some meat on the bone for kids on the high end. And I've observed over the years, more and more time being spent exclusively toward kids with extra challenges, which is great. I was one of those kids when I was a kid. I used to, I accommodated kids like crazy when I was a teacher. We've got 11,000 kids in the district and we need to make sure that there is meat on the bone for all 11,000 kids. Especially in a competitive environment where easier than ever, kids can homeschool, kids can open and roll, kids can go to the private school, they can do whatever they want to do and with them walks out the door $8,000 in funding. So, there are some economic free-market pressures to this whole thing that mattered to me from a standpoint of the fiscal solvency of the district. So, do I think we're in a predicament? No, but I think it's great that we're spending a little bit more time thinking, proactively thinking about all 11,000 kids rather than 1,500.
Certainly, our goal, as you, as we all say, as you've heard me say, is to give all of our students an opportunity to maximize their educational experience. So, regardless of where they start or from wherever they walk through the door, by the time they walk out the door at graduation, they have maximized that opportunity, so they've had a attempt to maximize their potential. And so, that encompasses the ability for all of our students to plug in to the right spots and to move forward with their education, again, maximizing those opportunities. You know, 12, really 13 years with kindergarten seems like a long time, but those of us that have graduates or soon-to-be graduates, you realize how fast that goes. And 180 days in a school year is not a lot. So, we really need to make sure that we're providing all of our students with an opportunity to plug in and achieve, you know, to maximize their potential.
I like the notion of having more and more kids feel like they are, that they can give a shot at an AP class.
Absolutely.
And get some college credit.
Yep.
I mean, some kids who never thought of themselves as college material can wind up getting a real wake-up call that, hey, you know, this, I didn't know that I was college material until I found out I was college material. And that's another part of, so the notion of AP and talented and gifted, talented being synonymous, that's a, that's a dicey kind of thing there.
For sure.
Because, you know, for obvious reasons. If AP becomes a pipeline to go on to further education, then I, I think we need to broaden that approach.
For sure. And then, so, what we know is that more kids should take AP than do, especially that freshman human geography class. And so, how are we working with parents, how are we working with guidance counselors to get those kids in? Because if they seek the first one, they're more likely to take a second or a third one or to get involved in some of the other coursework that we're talking about with the concurrent enrollment. One of the other conversations that we're gonna have is around the ACT. ACT results are gonna come out this week and our scores are good. They're embargoed, I think, until tomorrow or sometime. And, but the reality is 400 of our students taken, roughly, give or take. So, the research is if more kids take them, your score may dip a little bit, not a lot, but a little bit, but it gets that next band of kids thinking about college because they realize, hey, I can score, I did score above the, you know, the 21 or 22, which is sort of the college success indicator. And then if we can get them to fill out the FAFSA so they can figure out where those resources come from, that's kind of the, an issue to help kids say, hey, I've got the ability and here are some resources that maybe I didn't know I had to do that. So, it's, it's the AP, it's the ACT, it's the, you know, it's from beginning to end in the system.
Question. Speaking of AP, like roughly, do all of our kids take the AP exams?
No. I was kind of surprised to find out about half do, Mark.
Actually, it's more than that.
Okay. Yeah, you gotta speak in the microphone, you won't be on TV.
This year, based on the testing, we're looking at 96% of the students that are enrolled. These are the underrepresented students, but 97, 96% of the students that are enrolled have signed up to take the test.
So, okay.
96%.
96%. Okay.
Right.
We had a number earlier this.
The original numbers were.
Okay, thank you.
So, if, I know there's a fee for AP exams as well.
Yep.
And what if we have needy students that they?
So, we're working with the Foundation for Public Schools to help offset those costs. We don't want a student who's taken the class to not take the exam because their resource is not available. So, the Foundation for Public Schools has been a great asset for that. We do get a, is there a reduced rate through the AP, which helps offset that a little bit? But I believe the Foundation for Public Schools gave Tammy $7,000 last year for students to take the AP test who otherwise wouldn't be able to, might not be able to afford it. Yeah.
That's great.
For sure. Yeah, we don't want them to put in that effort and then feel like they can't take the test.
They won't take the exam. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
So, will spend more time in committee?
On all of these things, absolutely, Nancy. Any other questions? All right, number five. Leverage school-level areas of excellence and equity initiatives to create best-practice exchanges that foster information sharing, additional learning, and mutual support. So, as you might imagine, having an equity director has been good for us in this area. Taj has been able to spend a lot of time in the schools at the end of last year, at the beginning of this year, and beginning to put some of these things together. So, meetings are underway with schools to identify current training and future training opportunities and priorities. That certainly is Taj's work, well, it's all of our work, but Taj is heading up that work. Based on these needs, school-level trainings will be held to enhance the professional learning of staff in these buildings and ultimately, the district is working to develop a best-practice exchange process in a variety of areas, including emotional intelligence, personal empowerment, implicit bias, intercultural equity, and restorative practices. So, a lot of great things happening in pockets in individual buildings as we let buildings sort of set, you know, their path for that and Taj is in the work of looking at those and best practice and creating sharing opportunities and for his leadership to bring some of those trainings into those schools as well. Yeah.
Question that I have, and maybe this is for Taj. Have you traveled outside of just the community to visit other people in your position? Have they identified what equity means and, so that's my first question.
Have they?
Have they identified what equity means for their district? Because equity is like a huge word, right? And it means something different in every institution. What does equity mean if they've identified it?
And of course, you know, we do have for our district, we do have a definition for equity. And nonetheless, equity, you know, from a building to another means totally different. Of course, there is, you know, it's based off of fairness and making sure that, you know, every student has the equitable opportunity for, so nonetheless, that is an ongoing work. That's not only just defining equity, but also what does that mean in every classroom? What does that mean in every program? How effective are they? So, before we define, as we're going to define equity, we're also trying to internalize that with, with the, you know, the staff so they can define it themselves instead of defining it, you know, for them.
One of the other things that Taj has done, I think was the beginning part of your question, Anderson, is he's been on the road a lot. He's been to the UEN Equity Directors, he's been to Iowa City to meet with their equity folks, I think Indianapolis. So, a variety of, you know, Taj comes from the city and has a great background, but he's trying to get in, you know, the educational environment too. And so, he's, he's been on the road a lot trying to learn what's best practice other places as well and bring that back to us.
Also a dictionary for someone who's coming from outside, you know, when you see different acronyms, IC and, you know, different terms, so hopefully we'll share it with.
I know. Every one, I'll share it with.
I know. Every time I try to keep it down, they change it, so be ready. Get an eraser because they change the acronyms every year.
Taj has kept us very honest in our acronyms.
Yes, yes.
Shakes his head, so.
Thank you.
We've had your backup and beauty, absolutely.
Another question I had, related to the Iowa School Report Card. That had a variety of different data on different target groups that we should focus on. Are you seeing alignment with what the state is asking us to do and what building, buildings want to do? Are there alignments trying to focus on the target groups?
Stan, you can chime in in that, in that area. Nonetheless, yes, there is a different expectation from, you know, the state has their own standard and we do have our own standard and this is where data can also mean, you know, different things. So, and that's something I, you could help with that.
Yeah, so, I'll jump back in here, Taj, if I head the wrong direction. So, a couple of things, the standard-based report card that we went to is a key component of equity in the sense that the state standards are represented in the standard-based report card. So, if we're going to ensure that all of our students have access to those standards at the same level of expectation, because that can be a pitfall, the standard-based report card is an important part of that. The other thing that I'll warn you about, and we talked about this in the past, I guess remind you about, is the state changed the test, so we haven't had, so this last round of report cards is from data that's now more than two years old. We took a new test in April and so we will get those results sometime this fall, so we're not exactly sure when, the dates moved around a little bit, but sometimes this fall we'll get those results or maybe early winter. And so, we'll see how that impacts the state report card. But our students will take the test again this spring and we believe that now the system is in place, that the spring testing will get those results within about two weeks of the testing. So, we may actually be in a year where we get two rounds of testing. One, this fall, that represents last year's students, first go around, not really a baseline to balance it against, but then again, very quickly, five, six months later, four months later, another round of results that will be a little bit more apples-to-apples comparable because we'll have two years of data, so that'll, that'll be helpful. As far as the report card goes, so we have two schools that are comprehensive, two that are targeted, and the way the report card works, you, once you're identified, you have to stay identified for three years. And so, those schools that are comprehensive, those schools that are targeted will remain that for another two school years. They can't move off of that regardless of whether they make progress or not. But the state will add more schools to that list, so this, that list will grow statewide this year because you can only go on to it, you can't come off of it. Then after we get through the first three-year cycle, we'll see whether people have come off of that report card or not. So, were those the questions? Sorry, I get tired.
I would, you asked about whether or not we're doing what the state wants us to do, something to that effect.
Just in alignment to a point. We still gotta do what's best for us.
You know, exactly. Because you're, we, education should be about local control and you gotta look in the eyes of the taxpayer when you're walking through Hy-Vee. And the, what goes on at the state, whether or not that's good for us here in Dubuque, comes and goes with political whims in Des Moines. And, you know, I, it's. And, you know, I I, it's interesting, I hear local politicians say, oh, we should do what the state wants us to do when it's convenient. And when we don't like what the, when that person doesn't like what the state prescribes, it's, oh, we we shouldn't do what the state says, we should honor local control. So you get into these political games here, but I, yeah, I I I would hesitate to sell our soul to what the state wants. It's a good guideline, but state and feds, by the way, because it just gets weird.
It is what's good for Dubuque too.
That's right.
I mean, that's what it comes down to.
And Nancy says it best all the time, that testing doesn't share the entire story of each child, right?
Absolutely. Yeah, uh, uh, testing is one component in and of itself. I mean, I am not a huge proponent of standardized testing, it's a sort of a necessary.
Tool.
Tool, thank you. You know, but it is not the whole story. It it can't be the whole story. And and sometimes it's easy to rank and and label based on that one component. And that's unfortunate, but it's just the world we live in right now.
It's true for the strategic plan too.
It's true for the strategic plan too.
And highlights certain things, just as a standardized test assesses certain things.
Absolutely.
Got a whole lot going on.
That's a great point, thank you Nancy. So when we talk about our strategic plan or our priority initiatives, a priority, reason we choose priority initiatives versus initiatives, there's a whole lot of other initiatives going on. The priority ones are just those that represent some of the big things we're trying to do in the district and how we're gonna report those out to to the board and to the community. And so they're just the priority initiatives. There's many, many other things underway, just like with our strategic plan, there are many, many other things that we can't, that we can't. You know, if everything was a goal, you know, we'd have a hundred priority initiatives every year. And and so it is a portion of what we do. Maybe even twenty-one. We might have twenty-one this year.
Ten percent more than we do now.
It's just kind of hidden.
To be fair on all this though, when we do talk about the school report card, we should compare ourselves somewhat to the other UEN schools.
It was certainly, yeah, certainly. Number six, if we're ready to go there. Develop a portrait of an educator, align with the district's portrait of a graduate that supports and advances an educational experience in which students are engaged in their own learning through a variety of styles. So last year, Mark led a group to really look at, what is it that we want to know about all of our students when they walk across that stage? What is that portrait of a graduate, if you will? What is it that they have experienced, what have they been through, what does that diploma mean? And so that work really led to this year's work to say, well, if we're gonna get there, what's it look like for a teacher? What is it, what do they need to to do in their classroom? What, you know, if the kids are gonna, you know, have this experience, if they're gonna know these things, somebody's gonna have to lead that process and that process is teacher. So what does a teacher look like? So Portrait of an Educator Committee held its initial meeting with the second meeting scheduled for November twenty-first. Initial meeting focused on reviewing the portrait of a graduate, so everybody was kind of around, okay, what does that look like? Identifying student characteristic and how the work of educators must align to effectively engage students in their learning. So it's about the the professional development, the pedagogy, the all the things that our staff needs to do. And it's really a lot about sharing too, because we have staff who have a variety of teaching styles and experience. And so we're not necessarily saying every staff member will use every style in their classroom throughout a semester, throughout a year. But we want to have a varying degree of different styles so that students experience a variety of styles so that they can be successful at the next level. Again, going back a little bit to the personal end of things is having a daughter who's a sophomore at college, some of the teaching and testing styles she's been subject to as an undergrad are quite interesting. Here's a hundred true false questions. Really? That's a test? So things that we wouldn't allow here that unfortunately still sometimes happen. So we have to prepare them for not only the the teaching styles, the active learning, but we do need to prepare them to be able to sit and get and read and regurgitate. Not because that's good teaching, but it's a it's a survival strategy at the next level for a lot of our kids. At least in those first two years. So anyway.
Yeah, until colleges catch up with the.
And she has both, I don't want to go that, I mean, she, I won't even mention where she goes to school, she's had fabulous teachers. She's had a few where I just kind of shake my head and say, we wouldn't allow that here.
That's everywhere. Because we even, that's why this is really good, because it can help some teachers, you know, within our district that need to change up the way they're presenting.
Absolutely. So I kind of highlighted this one just a little bit earlier, but I'll come back to it. Number seven, increase the number of students taking the ACT with a focus on underrepresented groups and gather baseline data on students taking the Accuplacer exam. So the Accuplacer is the community college exam that places them into the right level of coursework. And so certainly many of our students do both. So there is not that we're gonna get to a hundred percent between the ACT and the Accuplacer, because many of our students do both. Districts collaborate with my brother's keeper to help assess and room barriers to student participation in the ACT. So there are some some classes, some work, some mentoring that goes on there. District is also in the process of exploring making AC testing available to each high school during the school day as well as related funding. So currently, if a student wants to take the ACT, they generally are offered, I think at UW-Plattville, Loris. Is there another site in Dubuque? I think those are the main two. There's a cost, there's the ability to get there. So can we become a testing site so that students can take that during the school day? And how would we help pay for that or pay for it? If it's gonna be offered on school time, then, you know, the free and reduced things kick in.
It's currently still on Saturdays?
I believe it's always on a Saturday. Yeah, so could we do it during this, you know, how could we at least facilitate it locally? And quite honestly, can we get to a point, are we looking at, and we'll work with the board, would we want to get to a point where all juniors who are on pace to graduate has the op, have the opportunity to take the ACT? I don't know that we would force them to take it, but we would make it available. Now, in a week or so, there will be an ACT story, I'm guessing. And part of that story will be a ranking of school districts and how they did on average on the ACT. And so if we go from four hundred kids taking the ACT to six hundred and that ticks downward, we have to be able to explain to the community, that doesn't mean anybody did any, we just have more kids taking it. And and there's no guarantee it'll come down, but it but if it does, we have to be okay with that because the greater good is more kids take the ACT opens or, you know, do they have an opportunity to go to the next level? A lower, if if it would come down, it doesn't mean that the kids who are scoring thirty-two currently, they're still gonna score thirty-two. It just means that the average has moved. And so again, I'm not sure where we're gonna end up with that because there's a cost to it. But if we could find a way to facilitate ACT for, and I I would stop one step short of saying all students, because we have juniors who quite honestly haven't lived up to their end. I mean, they've only got five or six credits instead of the twenty-five or twenty-six they should have. And so is that student prepared to take the ACT? Well, maybe down the road, but not today. So that's why I say students, you know, in line to graduate. So maybe they're deficient a credit or two or whatever, but how do we bring those kids forward, make it available to them? And if we could increase the number of our students taking the ACT, that in and of itself would be a win.
Upper mobility, it's all about education. But Stan, I have a profound faith in our local media that they would never.
I'm not trying to pick on that.
They would never print a story that didn't tell the complete story about kids and ACTs and how by broadening the.
I have every faith, I have every faith in that too.
Tremendous profound faith in our local media.
I would hope more people look favorably on the number of students taking it. That means that they see a future, they're looking forward to doing better than they thought they could.
There there is a local district who tends to be on the lower end of the scale who does have all of their juniors take the ACT. And they're okay with that. And that's okay.
What we do for the student who would want to take the Accuplacer or military, will we open up opportunities for them to do something like that?
I I think those opportunities are already pretty available. I mean, we could look at that too. So our next bullet is district is working with NICC to collect data related to previous student achievement and participation in the Accuplacer. How do our kids score on it? But I don't think that there is, and I'm looking for verification from Mark, maybe a cost to the Accuplacer. I know that there's not a cost to the ASVAB, they're happy to have you come in and take the military placement test. But I know that that, but I'm not even sure with the Accuplacer that there's a cost. I think that's just a part of their mission. We we can check that out. So I think there's less of a barrier there just because of of cost and availability. It's also not given the same way the ACT is, it's on this date, at this location, at this time. It's a come in and take it when you're prepared or available. So we'll look at that to make sure that there aren't barriers, but I don't think it has the same barriers at the ACT.
Think it would be good, going back to what Tammy said about giving all of our students a lot of options. So if it's that one day where either you're gonna take the ACT or go talk to the military or go talk to NICC, there's just a variety of options to keep you involved in something.
Yeah, there's, you know, we want to make sure our kids see the total spectrum of what's available to them, you know. Certainly through the community college, through the Last Dollar Scholar, through FAFSA, through ACT, there are many things available to to young people. They just don't always know about it.
Is that Accuplacer through NICC?
It is. And I believe it's the same that they use at all of the community colleges. So i- if you take the Accuplacer, that doesn't mean it's in NICC, it could be Scott Community College or Kirkwood or NIAC or DMAC, any of those. Takes a lot of hydration to talk this much.
Some people think.
Camo serving the superintendent.
Yeah. Some people think I'm used to it, but where are we at?
Number eight.
Did you get that? Did you get that?
In an hour.
Number eight, providing professional learning to enhance lesson planning, to move from a focus on assessing the standards to a focus on teaching and learning the standards. So implementing a standard based report card, assessing the standards was a lot of work last year. Now we're backing up and really making sure, and that's really Cindy and and her, the EST, making sure that they have the skills and the materials and whatever it is that they need to to effectively teach the standard, not just assess it. I did mention earlier, there's there's a, there's an equity piece in that, is that becomes the the, across the districts that all of our students have the same level of expectation and and access to the standards. Principals and educational support team staff participated in book studies, standards in action around this topic. As the work continues, it is deeply aligned with the work occurring in every student succeeds acts and future professional development planning. So our buildings have ESAP plans. There will be a state visit around those ESAP plans for the concurrent enrollment and concurrent enrollment. For the, for the comprehensive, thank you, for the comprehensive and the targeted group coming up sometime this winter, when I'm exactly sure when that'll be. So it'll help us to look at our our ESAP plans and and give guidance or input or maybe thoughts about how those could be tweaked.
What's the current status of ESAP District Y? Are we, is it still predominantly on elementary focus? Or are there secondary ESAP plans as well?
Yes, there are secondary plans as well. Yep, absolutely. Anything about that, Mark or Cindy? Yeah, so the middle schools have ESAP plans, the elementary.
You mentioned this indirectly before we jump to the next category. Although we don't see too much on here related to increasing students to get in trades, there's still behind the scenes, a lot of focus trying to get students and underrepresented students in like industrial tech and all all that right there, right?
Absolutely. When you hear me say concurrent enrollment, it doesn't necessarily math, mean math, science, English. It might mean taking welding class from Joe Connolly at senior high school or or any of those types of of classes that would lead towards, you know, two-year degrees at NICC or apprenticeship programs upon completion. So when we hear that, those words, that's not exclusive to sort of the core academic areas, if you will. But definitely, in fact, they're kind of leading the way. Quite honestly, there's a lot of work with John Deere and other interested partners about developing those programs because they see a huge need for workforce in the future and have a a focus and interest in diversifying their workforce. And so we kind of have, you know, we've represented a good opportunity for them.
And that'd be the CTE, the Career Technical Education.
Career, correct. Really across the board, I mean, Anderson asked about that, but it's also, so it's in the in the core content area, but it is also in the in the CTE area as well.
In the, would that fit under?
It might be under community-based more, right?
Well, I mean, it takes a community partner, and so we're engaging the the, our partners in that work, for sure. Was that your question?
Yeah, kind of, I I just was, I I also didn't see it mentioned in here anywhere. Not that it necessarily has to be, but it probably fits in number one in coursework pathways.
Correct, absolutely. And we'll bring those pathways to, because they'll be done in December, January. So we'll bring examples to, and programs will also bring examples to this next meeting that we have. So you can see students that have, Mark, I don't know if you want to add anything to that at this point, but that's kind of where we're headed so that we'll show a variety of different things. But it's certainly, in fact, quite honestly, the CTE area is leading the way in most of those things.
Yeah, we're currently working on a welding apprenticeship with the state. And the hope is to take that high school apprenticeship and then have students go to work junior year and senior year with a local employer. John Deere has worked with us quite a bit with that, but we're also looking at other local employers for that, to be a part of that program. You'll see later on IT Pathways is another pathway that we're working on. So there are a number of different places in our work with Greater Dubuque Development Corporation and the Dubuque Area Labor Management Council to try and provide those opportunities for our students so they get an idea of, in high school, of what they want to do later on in life.
It was just featured in the the Board of Education thing we just got. I'll see that, yeah.
Yep. So yeah, it, I guess I want to make sure I leave you with the idea that this is pretty broad. We we're not just focusing on kids who are going to four-year schools. We're looking at kids who are gonna go right out of to the world of work in an apprenticeship, to kids who might get a two-year degrees, young people want a four-year degree, kids who maybe go to the military, people who are, kids who are thinking six and eight years down the road to be, you know, advanced degrees, but giving all of them.
Looking at it how it also ties into the graduation requirements as far as.
Yes, yeah. And so you'll see some recommendations coming along the graduation requirements too. And that and that's, you know, there's some hard work to be done there. If we're gonna give kids opportunities, that means we're gonna have to back up a little bit on some of the requirements.
We are.
Because what's required of you and of you and of you and of you are gonna be different based on where you see your future. And that's, that gets to be a hot button issue a little bit. All right, area two. Analyze, community engagement, analyze data related to students open enrolling to other districts and develop an action plan based on these analysis data. Currently being compiled to determine students open enrolling out of the district based on October one count date. So we have created a map that identifies every student who leaves the district and the grade that that student is in. So we're gonna do some some surveying and and talking to to parents. I don't know, did try to figure out what it is that that entices them to leave. What I will tell you is that they tend to come in clusters. And so for whatever reason, you get a cluster here and a cluster here and a cluster here. So it's a conversation, so is something we're doing around transportation? Is it just the the conversation that takes place in the neighborhood amongst parents? Is there something we could do from, you know, a a PR or marketing standpoint? Because we know, and and Western Dubuque knows, and that's the recipient of most of our open enroll suits, if we can get them there for kindergarten or stay until they graduate. Because once they're through the doors, regardless what school they go to, they tend to be, want to stay there and be attracted to that. So but we have created that map, now we're figuring, okay, now how do we, what are we gonna do around these these students? Well, that's the next one, from this geographical models have been created and are being analyzed to determine areas of focus moving forward. So again, when we see those clusters, what is it that drives those clusters? Is it something that we can directly impact? Or is it more of an indirect and how do we have those conversations so that people know what they? And quite honestly, some of it's geographical. We have students, we have clusters of students who, based on where they live, live closer to a neighboring school than they do our schools. So they look out their window and they see a school two miles away one direction and four miles away the other and they think, I'm going to the one that's two miles away even though it's not actually in the district in which they live. So some of it's that simple.
It's a hundred thousand bucks a kid over the course of their thirteen-year career, a hundred thousand dollars. So you have five or six kids in a neighborhood that open enroll, half a million dollars. We have to ask ourselves as a product provider, why are they, why does that happen? And then and then whatever their need is, kind of like I said, we have eleven thousand kids in the district, we gotta make sure we are, we are creating an opportunity to retain those kids. Because you think about half a million bucks. If we do want to spend time talking about kids who have challenges and needs, how much will it, will a half a million?
how much will, will a half a million bucks do for those programs? A lot. But it takes acknowledging the fact that we have to have meat on the bone for all eleven thousand kids so that we don't lose that half a million bucks. And I think we do. I think we do address those needs. Don't get me wrong. But that's, we want to be cognizant of that, cognizant of that as a group of decision makers. Hundred thousand bucks a kid over the course of, of thirteen years and half a million bucks for a neighborhood that just decides we're all gonna go to another district.
And some of those things we have direct control over and, and a few of them we don't. You know, the geographical piece. But, but we want to make sure we understand that and have those, those conversations. The districts our size who have, you know, you look at Davenport, you've got Bettendorf, Pleasant Valley, North Scott that ring that, they lose, I don't know, a thousand. Cedar Rapids loses a thousand students to open enrollment.
So what's our, all right, I know our attrition rate is better. What, what is it real quick?
Well, we're still, we're still in the process of basically with the state, but it's around two hundred. So we, we get some in, we get some out, but it's probably a net loss of two hundred.
Much better than other major districts.
But still two hundred, that's an opportunity. How do we get that to?
Well, it is. We need to find out why they're leaving. And is there something that we can do? Are we doing what we can?
It's a million six a year that we don't have to work with. I mean, is it worth, you know, I mean, a million six? We can have a lot of people find solutions for a million six a year.
Absolutely. Good. Ten. Streamline and broaden efforts to translate key district documents focused on Spanish and Marshallese to better serve non-English speaking families. So we're at the purple, some steady progress. Infinite campus online registration was available in Spanish and Marshallese from the beginning of the school year. So that's particularly the Marshallese translation is, is a little bit specific to Dubuque. And so Mike and his team and some folks, some interpreters from, who live in Dubuque who are from Marshall Island did a nice job of helping us work through. There's a lot more to it than you think. Every time you click on something, it takes you to another page and another page and another page and another page. And so it's all of that. And does it say what you think it says? Because we had a few things translated. We thought said one thing and, you know, then using sort of our local folks, hey, go through this for us and tell us what it says and can you follow it? And not everything was always exactly. And so we were able to make those corrections. An inventory of current translated documents is underway to ensure that the most common forms documents are translated. So, okay, well now that registration's there, what are the other forms? And process enhancers are also in progress to ensure a streamlined and uniform protocol for translating documents. So again, that same kind of thing. How do we make sure that everything that it might take you to is translated? As I've mentioned, and I know you've heard me say, we have, so, so, so Spanish and Marshallese is by far the largest portion of our, our students who speak English as, as a second language or are English language learners. But we have, and it depends on the year, but between fifteen and seventeen different languages represented. So, so students who come from homes where the predominant language is not English and in some cases isn't English at all, and those, that represents seventeen different languages. So the translation of that is time-consuming but, but worthwhile. And some of the purchasable translations don't give you what you think you're, you're going to get. And that's where you run into the issues with that, that, you know. I don't know if you've seen that commercial. I think it's a, an insurance commercial where the guy says, my Dutch is pretty good. Have you seen that commercial?
Yes.
And so that's what we're trying to avoid. It's like, you know, he's translating, he's saying completely different things and they're hugging at the end or something. But that's, that's kind of my fear is that do our translations say, you know, what, what it's supposed to say? We good? Number eleven. Build the foundation for a data dashboard that allows for the connection and tracking of college career-ready experiences for each student. The district has selected and procured the necessary software solutions and accompanied licensing to house a data dashboard and other visualizations created by, by the school district. Mock sketchups of the desired visualization have been created to report out college and career readiness and indicators by student. Outside contractor was engaged to help design the data models needed to build proof concept college and career readiness visualization and working with Cooter Navigator to obtain data sets for the career system to incorporate POC, college and career-ready visualization. So. You always know the ones Kobe wrote, right? Sorry, Kobe. So the base, the bottom line is through Cooter Navigator, our kids fill out a, a sort of an in-progress questionnaire about their, their, their interests, their things that they have strengths in. And it helps lead them through what some of their college and career aspirations might be, starting in eighth grade. And then how do we utilize that data, capture that data from our students so that we not only have an individual understanding of what Kobe might want to do and what Kevin might want, might want to do, but also from a, from a macro scale, are we offering the things? So this is what's led to the career pathways that we've been talking about and the, in the, the strands in the course catalog. So if I think, oh, I think IT is my, what I really like, what are the classes I should take? Because, you know, our guidance counselors talk with students, meet with students, but really the, the, the heart of those conversations come at the kitchen table. They come having lunch with a mentor. They come on Saturday mornings when you're working with a group that's, you know, helping you think through those things. And so how do we make that data available on an individual student basis, but also on a larger scale so that we can help students, you know, choose the right coursework? Because it, it is frustrating to talk to seniors or to graduates who think they want to go off and be an engineer and you look at their, at their transcripts and their math experience in high school. You think, wow, you're a really long way from that because you're gonna really struggle freshman year, some of your math. So how do we make sure that if that's what they think, if that's what they want, we're not squashing that. We're supporting it by saying, well, here's some, here's the, some of the work that you, that you can do now to help put you in that right position. And so then how does that dashboard work so that the board can see that? So that individual parents can see that or sort of groups can see that? So that we're making it a little easier to, to understand. Kobe, anything you'd add to that?
No, I think you summarized that very well. I, I do want to stress though, this is a cross-functional effort that it really stems from Mark Burns's work along with David Muller, who is our college career readiness coordinator in addition to our lead technology coach. And then also some members on my team that are working with putting that data together and taking these various data sets that we have and trying to commingle that and thread that needle together to bring all of that information under one roof. That's the real challenge. And I think, I think when we get there, we're really gonna be able to help conversations for our speech, our teachers, our counselors, and most importantly, our students and parents for, to be able to identify those career pathways.
They're starting this freshman year in the Cooter Navigator?
No, they started in middle school.
Eighth, eighth grade.
Because that helps them register for classes.
That's right. Are they changing that annually or when they feel that they're gonna switch course?
The goal would be to have a touch on that annually.
They do the interest inventories yearly. So they'll do it in eighth grade and they'll revisit ninth, tenth, eleventh and twelfth grade.
And, and the goal is to create a system that is user-friendly enough and transparent enough so that whatever interested adult has influence or, or works with that student. Again, it might be a parent, might be a neighbor, might be a grandparent, might be a mentor. Can understand, can pull that up and say, oh, Jim, it looks like you're interested in being a science teacher. Have you thought about these classes or what are you gonna do to help you be prepared? So when you graduate, you're, you've maximized that opportunity that you had in high school to put yourself on that right path. And so it's, the data collection is one piece, but making it usable and then training who's ever interested to, to how that, how you can interpret that so that our students have relative experience about what are the right classes you should take.
And I think that's an important point that Sam brought up is, is the. What we're, we're trying to put together for any data visualization that we want to put forth in front of the public or in front of our faculty and staff is, is it simple, relevant and timely? Because we have data. We all know we have data, but it's trying to bring that together. It's, it's simple to, to be able to work with, to interpret. It's relevant to the mission at hand and it's timely. So we're not working with autopsy data. And that's one of the things that we want to continue to work with. And I think it's been a great collaboration between our post-secondary friends and also our technology friends to help make this work.
Did you say autopsy data? You got that dictionary? What is autopsy data?
Data that is no longer relevant and stale. There you go. There's part of the definition for it.
Our favorite term is when Kobe, in a meeting, pulls out the downstream hydration of data. We don't really know what it means, but we all love it when he says it. Sorry, Kobe. When Taj is talking about terminology, a lot of what he's talking about is Kobe. He does. But we wouldn't trade him for anybody. He does awesome. All right, number twelve. Create enhanced college and career opportunities through development of an information IT pathway program in collaboration with Northeast Iowa Community College. A draft pathway has been developed in collaboration with NICC and is being finalized. The pathway will be included in the high school course guide and made available to students. So this really started, we've had a lot of different conversations around this. IBM, other partners were involved and really it came down to who can pull this off. And currently it's the, with us and NICC. And then that could prepare students again for that two-year degree, which is a lot of work in the, in the IT field or to move on to, to get the four-year degree in, in IT. So it's, it's one that we're really excited about and one that's gonna be available to students really, you know, very soon. Okay, effective resource management. Revise the district facility plan to maximize additional infrastructure and technology fund, funding available through the Secure and Advance Vision for education or the SAVE or the One-Cent Sales Tax. In order to move forward with any significant facility planning, the district will need voters' approval of the new revenue purpose statement, which is on the ballot of November fifth election. So in case I didn't read that slow enough. In order to move forward with any significant facility planning, the district will need voters to approve the new revenue purpose statement, which is on the ballot on November fifth.
We need everybody to vote yes. We can say. I can say.
So we're gonna share a lot of that data, starting really tomorrow. We've got some other groups who, who have always been very supportive of the SAVE. And so if, if we're going to begin to access those dollars for the facilities plan, we just need the voters to give us that. The, the dollars have been approved through the state level. It does not change your taxes at all to vote yes. It does not change your taxes at all to vote yes. It just gives us the authority to spend those dollars on facilities. Right. It doesn't change the vote no either. There, there's no financial impact on yes or no.
Right.
From the, from the taxpayer's perspective.
I just tell people that it's, you're reaffirming the way the district has been spending the money that was allocated towards us and look at the projects that we've done in a, in a very timely, cost-effective way that benefits many.
And we will expect our wonderful media to help us.
I have a profound faith in our local media, but they will help us get over the hurdle on this one.
And I would also say, and we will try to share, you know, that of the roughly two hundred million dollars in sales tax in the past twelve years, the vast majority of those dollars have been spent on the local level. So electricians, plumbers, masons, the folks who do the work in our buildings, as well as the technology that we've been able to add to our schools. So really it is a win-win, not only for the school district, but it does create an employment opportunity or an economic opportunity for our local contractors.
And we haven't done the end around on our taxpayers like a number of districts have by throwing a bond, a bond vote referendum on top of the one cent tax, which is, don't get me started on that. There was a blood oath given here that we wouldn't be doing that and we've stuck to our guns on that.
Absolutely.
We've made it work.
Absolutely.
Yes, I understand the revenue of purpose statement. Check me if I'm understanding it correctly. Basically what it is giving us permission to use that which, those funds that are already generated for the purposes defined by the laws governing what that money should be used for. But it's not saying we're going to do something apart from the expected use of the funds.
No.
It's assuring the state.
Yep.
With the permission of the community, that we indeed are going to use it as it's appropriately designated.
Correct. Well said. Correct. Well said. Perfect.
And if the no vote is more popular, what really happens?
Well, we'll come back with another.
We'll bring it back to the voters.
Election, but we can't spend those dollars.
We'll re-educate.
We can't spend those dollars until it's.
Without the S. And it only, whereas a majority, right?
Yeah, I think if people understand what it means, we will have no issue. I think people are very supportive. Dubuque passed this. Dubuque County passed this as a new rural county before it became statewide. I think they see the good things from renovations at senior, the new buildings at Prescott and Carver and Roosevelt and, you know, all of the, the technology and, and the renovations in between. And so I don't, I think if people understand it, I, I don't worry that, that we will have support for it. Number fourteen. Bring the high schools to a full one-to-one computing environment by issuing anytime, anywhere learning initiative laptops to both ninth and twelfth graders. So as you remember, our plan initially was to add it to ninth grade this year, which have been of ninth through eleventh grade would have had laptops. Through prudent spending and some good bargaining by Kobe, we were able to afford to bring those to both our ninth graders and our twelfth graders, so all high school students so that even the seniors, you think about those mixed classes with juniors and seniors, everybody having a laptop. So we're fully implemented in that. They had that since the first day of school. At the middle school level, students in grade six through eight are preparing for high school courses by transitioning to one-to-one devices available to use throughout the school day. These devices do not go home on a nightly basis like the upper grades. So in the schools, they have enough technology that students have a one-to-one environment during the school day. We just don't send them home with the students at night in sixth, seventh and eighth grade. Fifteen. Ensure alignment. This is systematized or ongoing or the Kevin rule. Ensure alignment with the financial targets to ensure expenditures are maximized to support the strategic goals. We shared those at our last meeting. Boards regularly updated to the general fund, financial targets created prior year strategic planning. The board was recently updated to the financial targets for the year-end eighteen, nineteen school year and soon will be updated in estimates for the nineteen, twenty school year. So you know we take our budget very seriously because we know nothing will upset programming for our students faster than having a budget shortfall, which necessitates reducing programs, reducing staff, that sort of thing. So that is one of those sort of behind-the-scenes things that we are pretty accustomed to in Dubuque. It's not the case everywhere. I mean, there are districts cutting as much as thirteen million dollars out of their budget. You can't do that without impacting students. And so we know that the, the budget has to be in shape or all of these other great things we talk about begin to erode very quickly.
Well, thanks to Kevin and his department for.
Yeah, they do a fantastic job.
Significant planning, planning ahead. We're always in that zone where we spend not too much on our schools and not too little. We're right in that yellow zone. I think it's called.
Yeah, Kevin's been the president of the Iowa Association of School Boards for a couple of years. You go to Des Moines with Kevin and it's kind of like being with royalty. All the school business officials want to shake his hand and touch the magic. So we are very fortunate to have, we're very fortunate to have Kevin.
I got to go this year. It was quite a pleasure.
Did you get to meet Kevin?
I got to meet Kevin, yeah.
Fully implement the rave panic button building alert system and train staff on its use. Facility, facility, facility profiles in the new system are completed and undergoing testing. Forum staff piloted the launch of the panic button to test contact upload process and deployment. Develop a district-wide is expected to be completed by the end of the calendar year. So again, it's an app on our phone. If you hold it down for a second and a half, there are a couple of different options. It will send everybody in this footprint. So if I was that senior, everybody in that footprint would get it. And it's with, but within a second and a half when I'm pushing it, it not only notifies nine-one-one, but it notifies each one of you in under two seconds probably. It's almost instantaneous.
Do all the staff have this on their?
They will. It, it'll be an option. We're not requiring it yet. Yeah. So, so the staff could opt out of it, but it is, and then once the, you receive the alert, you know what the alert is about. It does allow nine-one-one or others to communicate directly with everyone on that system through text to give you updates about what might be happening, where it might be happening, different areas of the building can respond differently. So it is just, it's a communication tool. You know, we don't like to think a lot about the negative things that can happen with the aggressiveness or school shooters. But, you know, we hope, obviously the odds are that it won't ever happen in Dubuque, but we want to be prepared if it does. And you think about the, within two seconds, and today when we set that off, I mean, everybody in the room had that alert almost instantaneously. You know, the ability to lock doors, shut off lights, with one exception. In school shootings, school shooters have not breached locked doors. Only one time has, they have actually come through a locked door. So we know the simple fact of locking your door is the first step in safety. Then it's thinking about how you could respond beyond that, but even being able to. Then it's thinking about how you could respond beyond that, but even being able to lock all of our doors almost instantaneously is, is step one. And then being able to communicate with staff really allows them to be situationally aware and make the decisions they need to make to protect their students. Again, it, there's a cost, but, you know, it's just something that the community expects for us to provide a safe environment for their students. And it's, we talk about layers. You know, there are some locked doors, some physical layers, there's the communication, there's the training of students and staff. All of those layers, you know, puts us in the best position we could be in.
Has the feedback been pretty positive from staff?
It has. I'm sorry. So we launched our, our first test, our first full test with the forum staff today. The other thing I would just mention is we talk a lot about, or we hear a lot about active threat, active intruder type situations, but there's also functionality within the app to call for medical assistance and use 911 and to call for fire assistance. And depending on which selection is made in the app, 911 directly gets that information. So if someone says that there's a fire, the individuals in that group get that alert that there's a fire, as well as 911 immediately knows that that's a fire and not another type of threat. Or for medical response, that we will have it set up so that the administrator of a building, the nurse in a building, the appropriate staff to respond to that can be notified, not the whole building necessarily in that situation, but also while simultaneously calling 911. So while we hear in the safety planning conversations a lot about active threats, there are also many other features that would integrate within our ongoing practice of medical calls that are needed sometimes, or even just to test it with fire drills and those types of things, to have it be an ongoing presence.
I think about two years ago, I'm looking at Brenda because she was at Roosevelt, and I had a student at Roosevelt, we had a tornado warning literally at dismissal time. So we went into our protective posture, we had staff, some outside, inside, students. So this also allows some text messaging so that we can communicate with all staff members. You know, this is a tornado warning, it lasts another 10 minutes, all is clear, what, because we really were having a hard time communicating. So you've got, you know, 1,200 middle schoolers who, in the best of circumstances, are 1,200 middle schoolers, you know, now dealing with a tornado warning. And so how do we communicate with staff when, when, so there's, there's that piece of it too. And as Mike pointed out, a lot of those practical uses are hopefully the only thing it ever gets used for, but it's nice to know it's there if we need it.
I assume that's, that's the, the staff provides their cellphone, personal cellphone number on that or?
Correct. So the system is, uses integration with our payroll system.
So what happens when, let's say, just to kind of the mechanics of it, you're a teacher and you have, so you cannot have your phone basically on silent?
It'll override that.
Will it override the silent?
Yeah, so with both, with both of the major operating, phone operating platforms, there are guidelines for how to set it up in terms of overriding. So if you have a do not disturb on, you can still set it so that the alert that comes through will receive a message. And there's guidance for those who choose to do that. The other thing we know is when you're.
Kind of the amber alert.
When you're in a building with, you know, a, a large number of staff members, it won't take long to, in today's, you know, world where we have, you know, on our wrists, you may not have your phone on out loud, but you get alerts, you get messages. That we live in a time when those are less disruptive, but also readily accessible and available. So, but there are options on both platforms to be able to override that.
Employee excellence. Implement advanced intensive professional development for administrators and elementary teachers who are differentiated workshop-based approach based on identified needs. In August, Cindy and the EST team worked on Camp DCSD Professional Learning Day at the elementary level, provided over 100 sessions based on needs identified through school plans, ESOP plans, and technology integration. So the, the sessions were very intentional, but staff given the opportunity to decide what it is that they needed for that. It was really positive and powerful, and a lot of positive feedback for that. Administrator professional development this year has been and continues to be focused on topics of need as identified by the group. So what we've done with the administrators, we have district leadership meeting every month. And so we did it a little bit in the summer, but then we put together a list of sort of the PD that they needed or requested. And so we're extending our district leadership meeting at the end for 45 minutes to an hour and putting out the topic. And if an administrator feels that that's a need for them, so maybe it's around, I don't know, what's our next one?
Next one is Infinite Campus.
So the next one's around Infinite Campus. And so as we have new administrators, do they feel comfortable with it? If you've got somebody who's an expert in it, they're not going to stay, they're going to go back to their building, but those who need it can, can stay. So some level of choice there. In August, Administrator Root Camp provided targeted learning opportunities based on identified needs. Oh, and then I just mentioned this monthly district leadership meetings now include focused learning opportunity and other needs in the first, so again, what I just mentioned.
Stan, did you say that Camp DCSD is going to be implemented in secondary as well?
We're looking at that. We don't know that yet for next year, but I think that choice, I think that was a powerful enough experience and the secondary folks have heard about it. And I said, hey, we'd like to do something similar to that. So yes, I mean, we don't have specific plans for next August, but I think there'll be a, a version of that that is secondarily focused. 18. Take the next step to improving teacher practice through coaching conversations by systematizing the development and continuing learning of instructional coaches and mentors. There was recently some talk, some article around teacher leadership. And so, we have many teacher leaders, but certainly our coaches, instructional coaches, tech coaches, and our mentors are among some of our highly, most highly skilled professionals. But we need to continue to keep that practice up. So that, that's what this target's around. The elementary level instructional coaches are continuing to participate in learning labs facilitated by Keystone AEA that focus on completing a coaching cycle with peer feedback. At the secondary level, work continues in year three of the New Teacher Center District Level Training for Coaches and Administration with two secondary mentors who will be approved trainers. We'll have our own in-house ability to do that as opposed to work through the New Teacher Center.
That's great.
It is great. It's a huge cost savings, but it's also bringing that professional. And Nancy was pretty instrumental in getting that rolling too when she was on the team. Currently, six coach mentors are in year one of training, 17 are year two, and 10 are in year three, with 13 of 20 secondary's administrators trained. So again, focusing on that training for, for all of our staff. And then eight, or 19. Research best practice and develop a plan to maximize the impact of paraprofessional employees group on student learning. There's a real opportunity there. We've got 400 paraprofessionals in the district. And so, how are we maximizing their use? Often, when they're hired, most of the training traditionally had been on the job. And so what do we do to continue to enhance their, their learning so that they can provide more and more support for our students? So job-alike professional development has been enhanced for paraprofessionals across work groups, enhance learning and impact. Collaboration continues with UEN, Urban Education Network, Special Education Directors, and Keystone AEA administrators surrounding the best practices for determining, determination of need for paraprofessional support and plan to increase student independence. So part of what this really says is sometimes we can become overly dependent on adult paraprofessionals. And so, how do we help our students as they age, as they go from, you know, primary to upper elementary to middle school to high school, to not have a paraprofessional side-by-side with them all the time? Now, there are times that will be appropriate and that will absolutely be the case, but how do we help them learn some levels of independence so that they, again, maximizing those opportunities and so that they learn those independent practices so that as they become adults and graduate, they'll have opportunity to be independent without always needing the support of some type of assistance?
So is, is number 19 saying we're developing a plan for growing our paraprofessionals? Or we are?
So it's both.
I'm unclear.
So there's, we're developing a large-scale plan, but we're starting to implement pieces of that plan as, as we, as the year goes on.
So what are we implementing? We're doing some job-alike?
So there's, there's some job-alike trainings, there's the behavior training. I don't know, Brenda, if you want to mention any of these things? So.
So we have implemented some more short-term or things that we're going to implement right away. So one Friday a month is a job-alike Friday. So what we've done is we've designed some sessions particularly for the groups of paraprofessionals that there are. We do not have all of them done, but we've, we've started with some more intensive programs like our significant disabilities population, our autism paras, our behavior paras. We actually have library paras getting together during that one, different groups. So we have some things that we have tried to do right away. The others are going to be a little bit longer term. So one of the things that we're working really hard to do throughout, from now until the course of the end of the year, is to get a continuum of professional development opportunities that buildings can access. So our dream is to have next year, or actually by spring, to say, these are all the opportunities that we have available for professional learning opportunities for paraprofessionals. And then we're trying to give some of that back to the buildings to say, what are our needs in this building? So then they can access, I'm going to bring in this person for this group of my paraprofessionals, this is a need, or I'm going to access this session for this group, or maybe for all paraprofessionals. So some short-term, some longer-term. We also are working on designing, doing a little bit of change to our initial. We have a paraprofessional orientation that we provide. We're going to do, our goal is to have multiple times that we roll that out because we know we're constantly hiring paraprofessionals throughout the year. So we're going to, we're going to look at having that be, what do all paraprofessionals need to know? And then how could we break those groups into smaller groups to get more details that would be more applicable to them?
So portrait of a paraprofessional.
Yeah, yeah. So we have, it's kind of a layer, layered process.
So, Nia, so your question was, is this a year of planning or a year of doing?
Right.
And the, well, and the priority initiative was really a year of planning. But it's hard to plan, see the need, have the access, and not start doing. So the planning is well underway, but so is the doing because as you start to plan, you're like, well, this is, we don't need to wait until next year to do these pieces of it. So it will be more complex next year, but it's also being implemented as, as possible this year.
Do our paras come in for the Friday late starts or not?
It depends. So it depends, sometimes they do and sometimes they don't. It depends on.
That's what they would do out of this training.
Some of it would be during that time, yes. Historically, no, but we're starting to see more of that as we have training available for them. Which is really twofold. It gives them an opportunity to put a few more hours in, which has a paying impact, but it also gives them an opportunity to be more impactful.
Is this a goal also to maybe that paraprofessional, they decide, I want to be a paraprofessional in the schools? They're not sure the different types of students that they'll be dealing with, so you introduce them, maybe pair them up with the different types of para that they could become, maybe? You know, because you have different types of students that need the help.
I don't know if we've done that yet, but it might lead to that.
Right. Yep.
I think this is good overall. It's going to what all of us mentioned. There's a lot of meat on the bone. It does try to target all of our kids in a meaningful way to make sure that they're maximizing their full potential while we have them here. So kudos to you and your leadership team for the hard work. I'm real excited about this.
I appreciate that. And as you know, we have a fantastic team, best team in the state. And we really have worked through this process for about six years or seven years now. And you're starting to see a lot of districts, and even non-school districts, replicate this type of strategic plan and priority initiatives. And that's, that's great. You know, we, we're happy to share that with them. But, you know, it does specify, again, a report out to you all, but also to the community about what, what's different this year from last year? What's different next year from this year? And how are we making progress?
Yep, gives us good direction. Thanks, you and your team. And Stan, you also kept it under 20.
I noticed that. I, so we could have had that one as a standalone. I don't know. Math wasn't my strong suit, Jim. That's why I taught social studies.
The community knows from this, they can be assured from this, that this school district is about, no matter how good we are now, and we're certainly not perfect, but we're a district to be proud of, that no matter how good and what area is good, we are continuing to learn and grow and strive to do more and better for the kids we serve. And I think this is a powerful, well, it doesn't include, we know everything that's going on. It certainly gives us a very comprehensive look at some things that are targets, some things that have been selected based on data, based on feedback from the community, based on feedback from our staff, that really propel us to do, do more, be more, be better, be more effective with our kids. That's, that's something we can be very proud of.
Absolutely.[1765.82]